This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting for January 21st, 2020. To begin this evening, as is our usual custom, we offer the opportunity for public participation. Any members of the public who are here with us tonight in attendance are welcome to address the board, to ask a question, make a statement, or offer information. We ask that you raise your hand, be recognized, and step to the podium, and to be brief in your remarks if you would. So is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing that we have no one at the moment, we will move on. Board, may we have, please, a motion for approval of our agenda for this evening?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then also a motion, please, for approval of our minutes from the January 7th, 2020 Education Meeting?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Karen and seconded by Christina. Does anyone have any corrections, or additions, or deletions to those minutes for this evening? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Tonight, we begin in detail, if you will, our budget review and our budgeting process for the next school year. So I turn it over to Dr. McGowan to begin a review of, I guess we'll say, current status, if you will. Dr. McGowan?
That's weak, Mr. Kikamich. This is the first budget presentation. There's no play ball, there's no band, there's no drum roll, there was nothing. I've got all-new material, and that's it. It's a very bland introduction.
We're saving all of that for the celebratory budget presentation. We believe yet to be forthcoming down the road.
Well, I'll get on ahead of it, and our dear colleague Claire McLaughlin's here, I'm sure, on behalf of Fight for Brighton. And if you haven't yet liked their Facebook page, please do. The governor's detail, more detailed proposal came out today without numbers for us yet. It's pretty much as awful as the day is long, and so not a big surprise to somebody who hasn't committed himself to public education. So what was needed and proposed by every reasonable person who has an understanding of the situation was $2 billion statewide, and the proposal was for just under $900 million, so far less than half of what is needed to fund public education, with some pretty disastrous proposals in between for how that money would be spent, spread out, and they are largely the effect of which would be the opposite of the progressiveness he claims. So as we know what that means for Brighton, we will certainly explain that to people. We just know right now the very surface-level presentation that was given this afternoon has signaled that it'll be a very inadequate proposal for what is needed and not likely address any of the equity issues that we have been talking about here in Brighton and that have caused us difficulty around our foundation. So I wanted to make sure, Claire, that I got that out and mentioned that to you right now, or though for people to know that, that's where we're at right now relative to the governor's proposal. The budget development process, as we talk to you about every year, the needs are assessed in our program. We look at issues that we need to take into consideration for planning program for the following year. We design plans around that work and determine our capability to financially support that work and implement plans that have been revised based on our financial capabilities and the successive programs that are happening throughout the year. We evaluate the results of programs in the current year to determine what would be best for students next year, and continue to do that throughout the budget process so that we can plan the best program going in each year for our students. You pass guidelines, of course, in the fall, and they really boil down to making sure that we have sustaining revenue to support programming, and the action plans that are developed around the blueprint and support our priority areas: systems, mental health and wellness, academic rigor for all students, diversity and equity. And in the systems area, we include safety, security, capital planning for the long term, and of course, budget development also. We evaluate the resource requirements. One of the guidelines is to evaluate our resource requirements to make sure that every child has an opportunity to graduate with the skills necessary to move on to college career and develop their skills and talents to maximum potential. And in thinking about the economic climate and changing student needs, the board wanted to recognize us prioritizing our resources, evaluating opportunities for reduction consolidation, really looking at efficiencies everywhere that we possibly could through the budget process, which we will continue to do, and to look at the impact analysis of any potential reductions or consolidations within the budget. We also want to make sure that within the budget, we are prudently planning for implementing full-day K and the debt service impact from the 2017 plan. That needs to continue to be a part of our financial plan, and making sure that we comply with the New York State property tax cap, understanding its long-term impact as well. I want to reiterate that. Comply with the New York State tax cap and understand the long-term impact, because we do not plan to present to the community a proposal over the property tax cap number. Also important to point out, as many times as I possibly can, that the property tax cap number for Brighton has yet to be determined, but it is nowhere near 1.81%. So the headlines in most media outlets, including knowledgeable ones like Politico, were that the cap was set at 1.81% in New York State this year. That's absolutely erroneous. The 1.81% number is one of the seven or eight multipliers within the formula, and our cap will likely be far higher than that. It will not be 1.81. Just like we've said before, there was never a 2% property tax cap. The allowable growth factor from the state is 1.81, and that is factored into a larger formula that gives us our number, which will be unique to us. And Lou, in his presentation, will talk a little bit about the projections for the property tax cap over time and what that number actually does mean. Wanted to share with you the budget development calendar and what we have in front of us. We're currently right here, the third SEP, January 21st, and talking to you a little bit about the development process, enrollment projections, and some of the preliminary budget expenditures. At the next meeting on February 11th, we'll talk about that review of proposed revenue, essentially the governor's proposal at that time, and what that means for us, and the community feedback exchange, which I'll talk to you about at the end of the presentation. But essentially, we'll be putting on a thought exchange within the next week or so to ask people, what do you think? Where should we be? What are your priorities? What are you valuing? What should we be thinking about as we develop the budget going forward? More of a broad, wide-open question as opposed to very specific about each individual program, asking people to weigh in on their overall impressions of the budget going into the next year and what we should be keeping in mind. And then, of course, on the 25th, we have the budget review, a little bit more detail at that point, and the property tax cap levy limit. We will ask you to approve it at that point. There are community budget forums scheduled, as they always are, and we will attempt to duplicate some of the work that we have already done around Facebook Live events, and including more people in more technologically savvy ways in those events as well. The known budget factors right now are that we have increased staffing demands every single year for increasing student needs. So that's important to consider as we go into the budget process. We will have an increase in staffing demands based on student needs. We know there's an increased demand for special education services, part of what is driving that increased staffing demand. We will have contractual labor increases and changes to the minimum wage, and that's, again, a mandate by state law. And it's our own desire to make sure we're providing a living wage for all of our staff members as well, but that will drive up the cost for our consumers, for taxpayers. An increased demand for specialized transportation. As we bring more programs back in-house and have more students participating in special education programs here, there is an increased cost for the specialized transportation that is required to provide those programs. We know that the pension contribution rate will increase. That has already been shared with us. And then, health insurance rates are estimated to increase 8.5%, far slower than the growth of community-rated plans. We participate in a consortium, but we know that that will go up 8.5%. And there's a multiple-year impact of the capital project, of course, and planning for full-day kindergarten. We detailed that quite a bit in last year's process and in the budget, both the over-the-cap budget proposal and the finally-approved budget, where we talked about where we had saved within the budget, essentially planning for the long term. That's something we need to consider in this year's budget as well, to avoid a spike in costs later on for our community. And the allowable tax levy growth at 1.81%, that number that I just mentioned to you that the state is talking about relative to one of the factors within the broader calculation of the tax cap, which will be unique to Brighton. And the other factors that we have to assess right now in the process are changes in the mandated services and education plans that are being adopted right now through annual reviews, the elective demands, particularly at the high school level, where we still have a process based on student desire driving our staffing relative to electives, an important part of our culture for sure, and changes in state and federal aid. So right now, there's this issue of the governor speaking to diverting funds to poorer districts, many of whom, by the way, are receiving over 100% of their promised aid. Unfunded mandates throughout the process that tend to come up in the governor's language in his budget proposal, which I'm sure we'll learn about over the next couple of days. Volatility in federal politics and funding reliability, and that's been where we've taken title monies and programs budgeted in the title monies, the federal money, and moved them into the general fund, because we are often threatened with those funds disappearing, and they likely will over time. I'm going to make sure those programs are still supported. And then our financing strategies around the capital project and what the community would like to see happen relative to tax increases that are paying for the project that was promised, and how that impacts the overall tax increase and our need to operate on an annual basis. Just a quick word on some of the enrollment trends before we get into the financial trends that Lou will go through with you. If we look at our average class size, continues to grow. Average class size at 5th grade right now is up to 288, and we see that increase over time as students come back into the district, which plays into the conversation about full-day kindergarten. So I'd point out, under 21-22, if you look at kindergarten, we'll have in 2021 anticipated 184 students, and when we are full day in 21-22, we are anticipating 238 students. That's a pretty significant jump. But then, what that does also is we feel impact us later on when students who may have started in a private protocol placement and decided to stay there will likely stay with us if they start with us. So that impacts enrollment going forward, and you can see out to 24-25, we're expecting our current 14-20 to be more like 15-42 by the time we get to that point. A very different trend than what people are seeing in other suburban districts. We tend to be a place that when homes turn over in our neighborhoods, families with young children are moving in, and that definitely is the trend here. We continue to, like I said, not shrink, but rather grow slightly. And then we take a look at what is the impact on class size and what our ratios we've been able to continue to maintain. If you look at 19-20, relatively small class sizes right now. Going into next year, it shows you if we went up one or down one, and this is for your reference in the communities as we go through the process, what that would do to class size. So it's been a priority in the past, certainly something we'd like the community to weigh in on. They've expressed in the past that this was something that we should consider in the process, and we need to know that going forward also, if this is something still that people would like to see, small class sizes. We do know that it has an impact on kids in instruction, and we'd like to maintain those small class sizes, but there could be a significant impact if we have to reduce our teaching staff. And the student-to-teacher ratios, certainly over time, this is at Council Rock and at French Road. Overall, in the building, we're at 15.9 in 2018, the most recent data available in this particular format, and 13.6 in 2018 at French Road. So overall, and that's the number, it's not just teachers, but staff members working with children, so including all of our teacher aides and additional staff members working with our kids as well. This is just a quick table, hard to see all the numbers here, but want to point out to you, if you take a look, generally speaking, 22-20, 21-20, 20-20, very similar to our neighbors. So if people would like to get a sense for what is our comparison regionally to other school districts in their class size. In Penfield, 19, 22, 21, 20, 19. Pittsburgh, 19, 23, 21, 22, 22. Westerona, 21, 20, 22, 20. Very, very similar class sizes and comparable, of course, regionally. And then again, at the middle school, we take a quick look, and you can see where we have had a bubble at the middle school. Average class, 288, 297, 290 now in 8th grade, so this largest class will be heading up. The 2019 7th grade class will be next year, of course, in 8th grade, and we'll see that bubble continue on to the high school where we continue to grow. And want to show you right here, if we're able to maintain staffing, we will be able to maintain the number of electives and class size. But if you can see, we'll go up by 20-23, 170 students at the high school, which is a pretty significant number for building that size. Financial trends. Lou?
Good evening. This is a slide we show each year just to give a sense of where we've been and where we're headed. So we look at our budget, and one of the measures that we always look at, audit committee looks at, is this difference between budget and actual expenditures. And you see the delta there is the risk provisions that we start for in the budget. Those, when you're looking at those and when you're evaluating the opportunity for reduction in those margins, you have to look at this bottom line here at stable contribution. As we tighten up the gap between budget and actual, the first thing we have to do is reduce that reliance on our reserves and our appropriated fund balance. So that's part of the task. Karen and myself, we looked at, we participated in a treasurer's webinar, and that's one thing that they're typically critical of districts on, is that they rely on fund balance, but they don't see a decrease in the overall financial position. That's very well-intended here. We do not want to reduce our financial position. Our goal is to increase our financial strength, which helps us, capital planning and long-term planning, as we did with the 2017 financial, or facilities improvement plan. We look at the tax levy then, 2.3% increase in the tax levy over the period measured here. State and federal aid, we have seen upticks in federal, or state aid, excuse me. Most of that is with the categorical aid. So as we see our transportation expense increasing, we see our BOCs and collaborative purchases increasing, shared services, excess cost aids going up. That's what's driving most of the increase in there. We did have a significant increase in 2017-18 in foundation aid. After that, it's stabilized out. So just a sense of revenue trends and what we're evaluating right now. You have the dark blue here, and this orange is all property taxes. So we levy a property tax levy, and then we get the star reimbursement. That's in this separate category. But overall, we're about 70% reliance on local property tax dollars and 20% on state sources. Not a lot of growth, not a lot of opportunity for increased revenues in any of the other categories. We are reliant on those two. And with the state tax cap, there's measures and there's consequences with the state cap. You see the growth levy, and I'll illustrate this in just a little bit. They set the one factor of the property tax levy at 1.81%. So that's the inflationary trend that the formula considers. Yet, there's no mandate relief to offset any of the incremental costs that are supposed to be supported by those local tax dollars. The governor's also proposing caps within the state sources, so we'll learn more about that over the next coming, the coming days. But he's proposing to cap the categorical aid resources, again, without any mandate relief. So if you look at just transportation, the mandate for transportation, and part of our discussion in the upcoming weeks, is increased reliance on out-of-district, or increased demand for out-of-district runs. The governor is then proposing, well, that's your problem, district. You've got to figure out a way to meet that mandate without any of the aid to support it in the subsequent year. So that's what we're looking at from the revenue side as we're working to balance the budget in the upcoming year. When we look at our budget allocations and we look at strategies to manage our expenses, it's important to note that over 70% of our budget is salaries and wages. No surprise, we're a people industry. I disaggregated the salaries and wages there so we get a sense of where those staffing allocations are, starting with our non-teaching salaries, our civil service salaries, 9% of our budget, instructional support, so those are generally our certificated salaries outside of our teaching, and then administrative costs, 3% of the budget. We look at the benefits. We'll talk about health insurance benefits, required pension contributions that are based on salary, payroll taxes make up the bulk of our revenues. The next level is workers' compensation, which is a requirement as well. So most of those are tied to salaries, and any meaningful reductions in benefits linked to salaries can only be done on the salary side or through collective bargaining with health insurance. BOCs, the shared service, a significant portion of that is our special education services and participation in technology spending and business support. Infrastructure, debt and capital, 3%. That will be growing over the next couple of years. We've planned for that, and we're building up capacity to be able to fund that with a blend of local and state resources, and then everything else that required, utilities, insurances, instructional supplies, coming up to 14% of the budget. So these are our working budget assumptions. We're at the process right now. We're reconciling our budget to actual. That's our priority right now, getting a good base of 2019-2020 spending. So we're projecting any growth based on actual numbers, not just budget to actual. So we're considering that gap that I mentioned on the first slide, a budget to actual, and make sure we're maintaining appropriate risk provisions within those. So within salaries, we're rolling forward our current staffing models, anticipating some needs based on the mandates and trends at the building level. Health insurance, as Dr. McGowan said, is 8.5%. So we look at that. We look at our selection mix, family, two-person, single plans. Pension rates, what's been published so far is a range that may be 9 and 1/4 to 10 and 1/4, so we're working at the high end of that range. Hopefully, when the rates are set in February, it'll be a little bit lower. BOCs, based on the feedback we've received so far from BOCs, I sit on the Management and Steering Committee, overall, special education is going up at about 2%, so that's current rates. We still have to project what our placements will be, and that'll happen over the next several weeks during CSC season. 5% for transportation. The driver shortage is driving up those so they can accept more students, but yet they still need the same amount of drivers, so they have less revenue and require to pay the drivers more. They're in a world of hurt over in BOC's transportation. And then we're assuming 2.9% for all other services that we rely on BOCs for and that we receive reimbursement for in the following year. Debt service, no change from the projections that Bernie Donigan's sperm had prepared for us last year. Certainly, we received positive market results last year when we issued our bound anticipation note. Hopefully, we can achieve the same budgetary savings when we go to market in these next couple of weeks. So we'll do our next band in the coming weeks for cash flow. Equipment, and really supplies for that matter, too. It's department allocations, building allocations are flat, and any increases have to be justified based on programmatic need or mandate. And you can see the relative magnitude of impact of each of those categories. So I just wanted to show a couple of illustrations of the budget pressures from those working assumptions that I first mentioned. First, Dr. McGowan talked about living wage and the minimum wage increase. So over the last three years, the minimum wage increase has required a 70 cent per year, going up to $1,250. So if we were, the three units that are compensated on an hourly basis, if we were to push through that 70% living wage through the contracts, you could see the relative impact of those on each of the three bargaining units. So again, this would be a 70-cent wage increase at the current average salary. So we see Unit A there is 1,243 currently. We know that they have to get up to 1,250. And if you consider that this is the current average salary, that means we have people that are 10, 15 years, 20 years with the district that maybe are making 1,50, 50 an hour, and then we have people that entry. So the compression from the minimum wage has caused a lot of pressure among the hourly employees paid on an hourly basis. So this just shows you that. So you could see the impact, $270,000 there. The second piece, just for illustration purposes, is the impact of the contribution rate. So now, that is set by the New York State Teachers Retirement System. What we control is the wages that are eligible for pension benefit. So that's what's in our control. The pension rates are set by the respective boards. So an increase in the contribution rates, you could see we're at 10.62. This year, we had a budgetary savings with the rate dropping to 8.86. It's going back up next year at 10.25%. Based on our audited salaries, close to $30 million worth of eligible salary expense, you could see what our contribution is and what the required increase will be for 2020-2020. That's $410,000 if we kept wages flat. So that's how much that pension contribution impacts our budget. So $410,000 just from the contribution, assuming no wage growth in certificated salaries. So those two factors alone account for 1.4. Now, again, those are isolated factors, but just puts it in perspective when you think about the limitations of the 1.81%. That's what the state says is our inflationary growth, or that's what it should be. And just those two factors, aside from anything else that we spend money on in the district, would account for 1.4% of that, and those are generally outside of our control with mandates coming down from the state. So we've seen this slide before, just a sense of what we need to build to be able to fund the capital project. We always said back in 2017 that it was about a 2% increase in the taxes. Last year, we proposed to exceed the tax cap, have that funded, and then achieve stability over the next couple of years. That was deferred, so this is the year where we need to fund our debt service related to the capital project. So you see an increase in required tax levy, partially offset by the tax. So once we get to the level this year, we should achieve some stability going forward. We've got to close a gap a little bit, and we can use one-time resources to be able to do that, just to overcome that. And that's just the timing difference of when building aid starts. So part of our tax cap number, as Dr. McGowan alluded to, will be the capital exclusion. The fact that our voters approved, affirmatively approved, a capital project means that they generally accepted the debt that was to come with that, and we were transparent in what the tax impact would be of that capital project. So this then is our least first look at the property tax cap calculation. You could see this is our tax cap limit this year was 2.34%. Next year, when we look at 2021, we start with the base year tax impact. There's a difference in the tax levies. This growth factor right here, it's 1.0016. That's the second lowest in Monroe County as far as property tax growth, so that's not helping us with generally a flat tax base in the town. So that doesn't give us much additional revenue. Factor in the, and then there's here the 1.18%, which is the inflationary adjustment, which gives us a tax levy this year of $54.5 million. Then, we use the financial projections from our consultant. We use the estimated debt service and building aid schedule, and this would be the exclusion, how much we'd have to levy this year to be able to fund our anticipated debt service, net debt service, for the 2017 capital project. So with those factors, our tax cap number would be 4.14%. So it's very important for people to understand this formula. If all they hear is this one factor and this exclusion is excluded, then we have a lot of explaining to do as why our budget may look differently than what is published in the media. So again, after I said, once the tax impact of the project is funded, you could see our exclusion is relatively flat, and there's an offset each year. So you have 2.4 next year, 2.36, 2.5. Generally, we're within that 2.5% for the out-years once we achieve that base of the debt service. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. McGowan.
Thanks, Lou. All right, just a couple of final notes. We will continue to monitor our projections. So when Lou talks about things like transportation costs, those types of items, and I mentioned to you before around annual reviews, IEPs, mandated programs going into next year, so that all right now continues to evolve in terms of our planning going into this budget process. We will continue to work with building principals and department managers to look at places where we can be more efficient and look at what the impact of cost-reduction strategies would be. And as we had mentioned, we'll develop a community thought exchange. We'll launch next week and reviewed with you on February 11th, to really get a handle on the community's feedback at this point around what their priorities would be. We will also continue our advocacy efforts. We have some meetings scheduled right now with the Assembly Ways and Means Committee on January 29th, and with Senator Shelley Meres' office, who is the Chair of the Education Committee in the New York State Senate. So we'll continue that. We're trying to work also with the governor's office to have time with them, and I know Fight for Brighton has been very active and continues to be on the community side of things, and we'll continue from the internal perspective with policymakers that we can work with to try and find some equity in the distribution of foundation aid, which is always the biggest challenge for us. Any questions for myself or for Lou?
I guess we have probably a couple of comments, questions, lots of questions to come. I guess a couple of things I would add, Kevin. Thank you to both of you, first of all, but to the public who may be watching us either this evening or rebroadcast later, and to those members of the public who are here this evening who will be messaging to their groups. A couple of very important things I think we need to emphasize tonight. First of all, all the material from tonight, like with every meeting, is posted to the website. So this budget review presentation, which is 19 slides, I believe, total, it's really important, I think, for residents to take a look at that, to understand the snapshot of right now and the factors behind where we are as we develop a final budget over the next couple of months. We will message frequently and as succinctly as we can, as a board and as a district, to the public in Brighton over a few key issues, one of them being understanding the calculation of why our tax cap number is our number. You've made the commitment this evening that you don't intend to propose a budget that will exceed the cap, but at the same time, our cap number looks to be around 4%, and we'll have to have conversation about that. And the public needs to understand why, and Lou's chart shows exactly why. So we'll continue to communicate around that. The other element that I think we will, I know we will- The other element that I think we will, I know we will, communicate as often as we can, especially as the final budget from New York State is approved and we have the final school aid numbers, especially as relates to foundation aid. And it's really important that as people look at the news this evening and over the next few days on the governor's budget. Kevin, you mentioned the governor today talked about approximately $900 million additional he's proposing for education. About $700 million of that is earmarked thus far for foundation aid, which is really the critical factor for what we're talking about and what we need done is the foundation aid formula. He's also talked about today directing as much as 80% of that increase to districts who qualify as high need, low wealth. This will result in pennies and dollars additional to us. So our situation, when the governors, when the aid runs are released later tonight or tomorrow, is not going to be very good. And then we're going to have to work with the Senate and the Assembly on what they propose and end up being a final budget. But I just have to say, as a board president, as a member of this board, what we're looking at right now for this upcoming year in terms of aid from New York State is not looking very good, probably worse than last year. Now, we are going to make every effort we can, you mentioned us going to Albany again next week, and we'll continue that effort to attempt to get that situation fixed as it relates directly to Brighton. This is an uphill battle. It continues to be an uphill battle to get those in Albany who are able to flip that switch and fix that again to be able to do so. But we're going to continue to work on that. We do have to message, and the Fight for Brighton folks continue to do that through their efforts, we will, as a district, we will, as individual board members. But this is a very difficult situation that many districts are in in New York State with regards to how we fund public education, and we're part of that big battle. But specifically in the short term, we are still one of the very, very few districts that are disproportionately affected by the way foundation aid is politically doled out in New York State. And the fact that the formula is not allowed to work, and the fact that the switches are thrown in there that have affected us for years in a very negative way. So, you know, I know we try, it's very difficult, and it's frustrating for residents that we talk to to understand this situation, and why can't it just be fixed? We're working on it, but it just can't, it's not that simple. It's very difficult to understand and very difficult to really have a conversation about. There is a greater conversation in Albany that will continue to move down the road as we go into the upcoming intervening years with regard to the change, possible change to the entire way that public education is funded, but for right now, we are left with what we are left with, and that is the governor's proposal and ultimately what will be a final budget, and then that foundation aid number. So we continue to work on it, we continue to message to folks, but it's going to be a challenge in every way that we've described it this evening. So I guess I felt the need to make sure we start on that note because it's going to be that way every single meeting as we go forward.
No doubt. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. And next up, then, we do have, are you going to start us off from up there, or is this going to be our folks on our blueprint updates and recommendations?
Yes, and Lou's going to start the blueprint updates.
Okay, so tonight, we are going to get our, sort of our January look at our blueprint plan that we developed in the summer and put in place before school begins to see where we are in updates and current recommendations. So Lou, I turn it back over to you.
So last time we gave a blueprint update, we talked on the safety, security piece of it, a lot about our security guards and investing in our security guards. And since that time, we pivoted a little bit and reprioritized our efforts, realizing that we're missing an opportunity. This is a quote from a newspaper article after a regional school had a threat. "We can't rely solely on catching individuals or identifying individuals when they are already up this pathway to violence." So Dr. Hall took the lead and did a lot of research with this, with area schools, and there's an emerging model in school safety, and it's a threat assessment modeling that we've shifted and pivoted to an implementation of. And we've actually engaged Professor Mark Concordia to provide training for all of us. So I'll get into that just in these next couple of slides. So one of the things, the foundation for this, where we're headed, comes from the enhancing school safety using a threat assessment model from the National Threat Assessment Center. So part of what's in this very small print here is establishing multidisciplinary teams and meeting on a regular basis. So this is one of the recommendations. We were aware of this, we were learning more about it, we were admittedly floundering a little bit on what that meant and what that looked like. And Professor Concordia has developed a training protocol to help districts in that. So we're partnering with the East Rochester School District, Hilton, and West Round Equator partnering to implement this, these protocols and this framework. And it's a framework, it's not a canned training approach, but it's a framework. So this is a little bit more information about where we're headed and what we're doing. So I don't mean to read to you, but it's important language. "The multidisciplinary threat assessment team in conjunction with the appropriate policies, tools, and training is the best practice for preventing future tragedies." So we were looking at things of, once something, once we're aware of something, how are we going to react to it, how are we going to manage it from an incident command system? We realized we're too far down that pathway. We needed to back up a little bit more and make sure that we were doing everything that we can to prevent that entry to a pathway to violence. So we're going to be establishing multidisciplinary teams, including administrators, school security, law enforcement. We had an introductory meeting with Brighton Police, Chief Catholde himself and Captain Desane are very willing and partners in this, as well as more of a significant investment in our school mental health teams, our school psychiatrists, psychologists, rather, social workers, pupil services, everyone in the mental health field partnering with community-based So that's where we're headed from safety, security. No real updates on the systems piece of it. The presentation back in October, our building condition survey was deferred for two more years, so we're still working on working on our plans in-house. And I apologize, I deleted that slide, but that's where we're heading on the systems piece of it.
And this all leads into our wellness committee and our mental health, and when you think about it, building bridges of trust. And when we think about safety and we think about keeping our kids and community safe, where's our first layer of protection? It's building those bridges of trust between our community, our parents, our students, our teachers. So we are offering district youth mental first aid, which has already started or is starting this week, January and February, for people, that is tier one intervention for parents, for teachers on how to intervene with students or anybody who may be having a mental health issue at the very first level. We're not talking about digging deep with psychologists or psychiatrists, but if you see something, how do you intervene with that at the very first tier level? So we are also have rescheduled our new student reception for our new families to build those bridges of trust with those families and to welcome them. We had to unfortunately postpone that event, and it is rescheduled for March 23rd. And in addition, the wellness committee at our last meeting, we looked at the five love languages of children, and I did not write this book, so I can promote it. I really recommend this, I read it years ago, we brought it to the wellness committee, and it looks at not just, there's one for adults, there's one for children. It looks like, how do we feel valued as a person? What makes us each feel valued? And we're all different, and sometimes we show value to others through how we feel valued. So there's actually a little, I'm going to call it a quiz in the back of the book that I've used with children and some of our psychologists are starting to use with our kids and teachers, to look at how do we help our kids feel valued? So some people feel valued through touch, which at school might mean a hug or a tap on the shoulder, affirmations, you did a great job, time together with your teacher or with your, with other parents or volunteers, gifts, which at school mean stickers or parties or whatever that looks like to help kids feel valued. And then acts of service, helping, helping each other and helping somebody to achieve a goal. And if you reflect on that with your own family, how do we help each other feel valued? That's going to continue to build those bridges of trust. So we're really excited about that conversation that's going on in each of our buildings.
So from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, how are we continuing to increase the academic rigor for our students at this point in time? And in particular, with focus to continuing to develop our, and increase awareness and develop ourselves as a staff with regard to culturally responsive strategies, techniques, approach, awareness, and mindset? We are making connections, in particular with some of our practices already in place here in the school district. How can we apply the lens of cultural responsiveness to our approach to visible thinking, inquiry, project-based learning? And in particular, Curriculum Council, a K-12 group, is looking more deeply at those practices, and in particular, neuroscience, in particular with the brain. And they are using the text from Zereta Hammond, culturally responsive teaching and the brain. And you, just recently, I participated not only with Curriculum Council, but also with District ILT, and our administrative PD also took a look at some of the work and actually look at video from her as well. So as we continue to look at the alignment of our cultures of thinking, habits of mind and mindset, and what's really exciting is to date at this point in time in January, we have had staff participate in about 22 different professional developments, both in district and reaching out of our district. And at this point in time, we have about 233 participants in a variety of those different professional developments, which we're really proud that we are supporting and continuing that work. And as Mark knows, another subgroup of Curriculum Council is our K-12 Look at Homework, and we are also continuing that look at culturally responsiveness in our practices around homework. Also, as we look through the lens of mental health and our practices currently both at elementary and the secondary level. We have been tapping into the study that's been going on at the high school, they're year-long. Thank you, Dr. Hall, for sharing all the work, most recently at our last session around the department work, department survey that's happening there as well. There's been a lot of rich conversation, we've studied a lot of different literature, we have looked at practices both neighboring districts, who's looking at what, who's even exploring the work, what's out there? We looked at, as I said, differentiating between elementary and secondary, and it's been a lot of rich dialogue, and it's actually, I'm proud to say, it's been a very engaging group that sometimes we need to say we need to move on because they really are engaged in the topic and want to keep talking. I see Mark smile, so I'm guessing you're agreeing with that.
It's my subcommittee, we've been having good conversation. You are correct.
So in terms of increasing and looking at how we're increasing our academic rigor through using instructional technology and supporting high-quality instruction, not that it is just, that is enriching our instruction and not just there as a replacement for good instruction, but of value added. We are continuing to look at how we are supporting our tech mentors in each of our buildings, and we are also proud to say that we had over 26 participants over at, participating in the ice skate conference this year. So we continue to look and explore how we can advance our knowledge and share our learning with other folks as well. Lou?
So an update on our Hiring Practices Subcommittee. The three areas that we're working on this year, I spoke through last time, the retention program that Dr. Washington and Renee Baker are helping us with. So this is our current work right now. We're actually meeting tomorrow morning to begin to look at the bottom one even more, the continuous recruitment, what opportunities that exist locally, and that's what we're trying to focus on. We will be attending the Career Fair for Rochester City Teachers. That's going to be held on Valentine's Day, actually, so we'll be heading there. And I'd actually invite Dr. Hall and Mr. Thomas to come up to talk about the first quadrant, or first third, rather, about artifacts, photos, and artwork. These three areas are right from our action plan, and I ask them to speak to it at their respective buildings.
Last year, our committee walked the buildings to get an idea of what we would see posted all over the halls and in the classrooms. And so that's what I did recently to see what I've noticed as I walk the middle school halls. And you walk in, and everybody's familiar with the flags of the atrium. You may not know, we also have the rainbow flag up, too, that our GSA club purchased to represent the LBGQ community and make sure everyone feels accepted. If you keep stepping into the atrium, you'll see the Black Student Union just did a Martin Luther King, "I Have a Dream That," and then students filled out the rest of the card and posted them all over the lower atrium with a lot of other information about Martin Luther King in preparation for the Monday holiday. All over the building, you'll see languages or posters of all different languages welcoming families, telling them what the, where the offices, where the nurses' offices, where the library is, so that people from all cultures can read and understand where they are in the building or where they need to go. We are hosting the Shinniman Program. Two students from Israel, and they're gap year, are doing a lot with our students in assemblies, but also they have one display area. And currently, they have Israeli slang, which is very popular with the kids as they pick up some Hebrew. And finally, our book display in the library not only represents a diverse variety of authors, but also topics that our librarian is really focused on. So these, along with other presentations and posters, have really added to the mix in our building to represent all cultures.
Our Culture, Climate Leadership Team, made up of students, parents, faculty, and administration, have been meeting for, this will be about a year and a half now, and been doing a variety of things. One of the things we're actually getting into as the new semester begins is to finally implement some of our recommendations we've been talking about, and part of that will be doing our own walk around the building, but also ensuring that what they see represents all of our cultures and our religions and our races in the school. So that's something they're going to be recommending as we go into the spring, so more to come on that, but we want it to be as inclusive as possible, and that's one thing that our CCLT, one of their missions is to try to make everyone in our culture and climate feel that they belong and that they have a voice and that they see themselves. Earlier this fall, as part of this group, but we commissioned two art students who are current seniors to create a large painting in a tribute to Maya Angelou. We'll get them, it's actually probably going to be like a four-by-five painting that they're doing with her picture, their rendition of her picture with one of her famous quotes, and certainly she's a famous renowned author, poet, actress, civil rights activist. But one of her quotes on there, which we felt kind of captured all things diversity and how, when it comes to diversity, how people feel when you speak to them, and not just by what maybe you do, but the famous quote, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And with her image and the quote, we're hoping that'll be kind of a striking thing to see as you enter the main part of the school. So that's going to be up. And of course, thanks to the Nancy Beck Fund, we're continuing to frame artwork in the high school. But I think this year, as we've looked at our artwork, trying to, and if you kind of see from the original paintings that we put up to the ones that we're kind of putting up now, capturing more of that spirit of diversity at the high school, representing our community racially, religiously, culturally, in the artwork that we're choosing to display. So hopefully, that will continue. We have several new pieces that just came out of the art exhibit that's on display near the library now. So that's where we are. Thanks.
So part of our intentionality of diversifying our staff and bringing on more teachers, particularly teachers of color, is that this is part, and it's in a cycle diagram for a reason, this is all part of the campaign that we're building to recruit and retain teachers of color. So what we're asking for is certainly, this is part of their work, everyday work, from the specific lens of the Hiring Practices Subcommittee, this is our, this is our interview to candidates. We want them on campus. That's one thing Renee Baker says over and over to us. You have to get them on campus, you have to show them the work that you're engaged in and that you're serious about diversifying your staff. So part of this work, that's part of their everyday work, but from an HR and a recruitment standpoint, this is our plan. The second, third there is what Deanna and Carolyn will speak to, and it's us from the Hiring Practices Committee taking credit for that work and being able to showcase it, be able to communicate it, and prove to candidates that we're serious about our objectives. So this is the work we're engaged in right now, really proud of it. So this is the work we're engaged in right now, really proud of it, and it's just going to keep growing and growing. Thank you.
So, so the Family Engagement subgroup has been working continually this school year with liaisons from each building, and that would include then emails out to the new families. An example of that would be at the high school, connecting with families regarding the math curriculum. As you heard from Carolyn previously, we have rescheduled our new family reception, which has been a great event we're all looking forward to, and we will be visibly present there as well. This school year, we have also hired a family navigator who is continuing to connect with families, mostly in the area of mental health needs. And we continue our consultation with Dr. Marla Washington, who coins his continued work with Starbucks Conversations, connecting with families and their experiences and advice and suggestions for us moving forward. Another part of what New Family Engagement has also done is taking a look at our registration packet in a way of making it easier for families to be more efficient for staff, but also with thinking about families who have children in multiple buildings with siblings and what's an easier way to continue to get that information as we need and as expeditiously as possible. Another piece is we look at French Road and Council Rock for their curriculum nights this year. They provide a childcare, and that was positively received and appreciated by our parents. As we look to communicate with different families, there's been an increased use of translation systems, including that you see there, Proprio there. It also helps when, in the moment, when you need to get in touch with a family and you can't necessarily secure an onsite translator, interpreter, and it makes our timely communication more efficient and responsive to our families and to the many languages that our families speak. In terms of times, we're trying to look at how we structure our curriculum nights, both at Council Rock and French Road, and these are just some examples. Fourth grade students were invited to come with their parents. And this year, we actually took some more formal monitoring of the participation of our parents attending these events. Was we look, in particular, you heard me mention before about siblings in multiple buildings, taking into consideration when we schedule our conferences to make it easier for families with multiple children and with siblings to accommodate their needs to get their conference in. As you heard me reference before about Curriculum Council and taking a look at Zaretta Hammond's book, but also when we think about engaging our families in this work and how we can think about how our practices and the response of the brain and how we can continue to develop relationships that way, promoting a culture of thinking. The Fres, this is an example as well, the French Road Family Engagement Group. Here's some highlights of some things that they took a look at, some suggestions and ideas that they put in place. Community Building Circle with Parents and Curriculum Night in particular. There was a less emphasis on a stand and deliver approach. Some things might have been available to parents as a handout to pick up, and more emphasis on relationships and getting to know each other. Parents wanting to come into the classroom. Our classrooms are using Seesaw more frequently to keep people involved. It's a wonderful two-way conversation in the moment and opportunity, especially for families, to access that at multiple times throughout the day, to see what's going on in their classroom, ask questions, respond, and share some thoughts also with their kids about the great work that they're seeing that's happening in their rooms. Again, I mentioned before that students were invited to attend with their parents. There were even some curricular scavenger hunts, as you see listed here, leading parents around. It had more of a social atmosphere with some refreshments, which was really refreshing, and we also heard very positively received as well.
And as we continue the conversation about special education, and we have been digging deep into the biases that we have regarding classification, regarding how students receive services, and really continuing to examine those beliefs, policies, and practices that support those biases. In our recent meetings, which are very, they're very deep, difficult conversations, they're very personal to people, we're talking about our children in a very personal level and our families, and what we have brainstormed around developing a rubric or a checklist that can be used in the examination of our practices. So we're going to continue the work throughout this year to look at what questions we would put on a rubric or a checklist. When we have our CSE meetings, when we have our RTI meetings, are we asking the right questions to start to look at what biases are we showing toward how our students receive service? So that's an ongoing conversation, for sure. I am also going to, oh, here we go, sorry. I'm going to represent Betsy Bolling. This is her work. She is unfortunately homesick tonight, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the restorative practices that have been going on in the district that we have been talking about since last year at this time, when we really started to make plans for all of the trainings. And we are continuing the implementation of the circles across the district at Council Rock. There are circles at morning meetings, at the end of the day. Mental health staff is moving into classrooms and helping to develop those circles. Again, the circles are all about developing those bridges of trust, which are in turn going to help our kids learn how to get along and to collaborate and to cooperate with each other in a very positive way that's going to impact our entire school district and everything that happens. We move into French Road. Again, the same thing is happening there. Mental health staff is going in. We have second-step lessons in every classroom at Council Rock and at French Road, which are social, emotional teachings about how to interact with other people, how to be self-reflective about your own feelings. So that's happening across all of our classrooms in grades K through five, along with the circles. And at TCMS in the high school, again, every student has experienced at least one circle and probably several circles at this point, where people are calling upon our power team of teachers and counselors and administrators who have been trained to come into their classrooms to help them when they feel like they might need a little bit of help facilitating. We're going to continue this training with upcoming trainings for all of our administrators and mental health staff that will be trained by the partners and restorative initiatives in restorative discipline and looking at our discipline practices and how can we supplement what we do to, again, build those relationships and help children and families understand how we can be a more cooperative community with each other, so in the hopes of reducing the discipline that is needed through all of these interventions. And in addition, teachers will be immersed in academic circles. So not only how to build those social circles, but how to use these, this same strategy, whether you're talking about a novel that you're reading in English or a science project that you're doing, that you can do that, so everybody has a voice. And that's one of the most important parts of restorative circles, is that it's giving everybody a voice. The children who don't normally want to participate start to feel more comfortable participating, or the families that may not be able to have that conversation with teachers or administrators, where it sets up an equal playing field, where everybody has an equal voice. So we're really, really excited about all of the new initiatives that we're continuing to work out throughout this year. Are there any questions overall for any of, any of us who've presented on the blueprint?
That's great. Board members, does anybody have anything to add? I get, Carolyn, it does strike me, to the group, a couple of things that you mentioned, you mentioned difficult and deep conversations, emotional and close ties to many of the subject matter. You know, generally, I think that's true of all of our blueprint priority areas. And one of the things that does strike me, and of course, board members serve on all the different subcommittees, you know, the work that we're doing, and again, I earlier suggested the public should take a look through the budget update. I think, take a look through this report also, as long as you're on the website looking at material. But this work, we're in the multiple years of work on every one of these subject areas. And we are deep with it. We're getting wider with it, broader with the work. It's getting more and more embedded, and the commitment is wider and wider. A number of you, when you spoke, talked about numbers of people who've been trained or who are involved, and those numbers are growing every single year. So we do appreciate the update. We very definitively set the priorities, areas for the year to pretty much continue the work that had already been begun in years past. And it's, I think we're in a great place seeing results from work that has been done in the past. So the other thing I would like to bring up, because we have talked about dollars a lot tonight, I was at a recent trip to Albany with school boards people. And one of the things that school boards people in New York State and superintendents are working on is with our state leaders, but our federal leaders also, we're really looking to get dedicated funding streams for mental health, social, emotional health, and safety and security. All school districts are spending a lot of resources in these two very important areas that, right now, are included in tax cap calculations and come from foundation aid for the most part. So we really need statewide sources of revenue and aid that are outside of the tax cap situation, if you will, because the pace of those investments and the need around both of those areas is truly increasing exponentially every year. So that's another area that we're trying to work on, and we're actually gaining some steam in that. I don't think anything was in the governor's budget today specific to that, but we continue to work on that also, so.
I think that's a really important point.
Really, it's needed, and it's not going to diminish at all that need, right? In the near future, so. Thank you very much. Okay, then we move into our reports section for this evening. We have our financial reports. We have four different financial reports this evening. We have the usual executive summary report from Lou dated November 30th. We also have the treasures report from Lou and Dahlia dated November 30th also. But also this evening, we're accepting the single audit report and the financial reports for the extra classroom activity funds and the single audit that I just mentioned for the year ending June 30th, 2019. So that, we have a memo, a resolution provided by Lou dated January 21st. May we have a motion, please, to approve that financial report? Thank you, Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Larry, as presented to us and had come through Audit Committee previously on our extra classroom activity funds and the single audit performed by Ray Wager and his folks. So all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Our student representative report. Theo, welcome.
Thank you. I'll just start off by saying, we, our BSU, our Black Student Union, hosted the annual Martin Luther King Jr. Assembly. Our speaker this year was very animated, to say the least. It was a pretty exciting assembly. Mr. Chaz Bruce, who is a local music teacher, dancer, and apparently also TikTok famous, so that was pretty cool. Winter sports are entering their latter half of the season. Hopefully, the Berens will continue to make us proud. This week is midterms, so the, starting today until Friday, the student body will be stressing over studying for that. And along with that, the second quarter ends. So although this week might be a little difficult for us, the seniors especially will be excited to enter the second half of the year and hopefully coast through it. Our winter semi-formal dance organized by the Executive Council will be happening this Saturday, I believe. It's called the Snowball. There'll be food there. Our, a couple of our a cappella groups are performing for the students. The Crazy Pitch is in Ma Capella, so that should be fun. And then, if you're not a student and you're just in the community wanting to see the a cappella group perform again, on the 31st of January, that evening, Acapulco, which is our, you know, big a cappella concert will be happening. So definitely come out and see that. And that will have all three groups, The Crazy Pitch is, Ma Capella, and Baronets. Great groups. If you're not there to support them, you can be good at supporting me. Yeah, that's all I got.
Okay, and I believe that's at French Road Cafeteria.
Yes, true.
Correct? Yeah. Thank you very much, and thank you for the update on the report. And we always enjoy hearing directly from one of the students as far as activities at the high school. Not that Dr. Hall doesn't share everything with us also, but a different point of view. So thank you very much. Our Board of Education, our Monroe County School Boards Association standing committees, Labor Relations did not have a December meeting, but meets tomorrow.
On staff recruitment.
Great, thank you very much. Information Exchange, again, did not have a December meeting, but met on the 15th and...
Christina, you want to do anything?
Christina.
Julian and I went.
One of you?
Well, Peary was there, which we hear...
Which Carolyn just mentioned too, the Peary folks, yeah, we know them.
So they presented at the last informational exchange meeting. Everyone in the room got to do a little kind of a circle.
We did a circle.
Right, we did a circle.
Table circles.
Yep. And, you know, something that we're familiar with here in Brighton, and it was really nice to see that other districts are doing it too. I didn't realize, actually, to the extent that Peary has worked with other districts and gave a little background and what else?
I personally felt really good about where we are in the process, that we have been working on it, investing in it, we're broadening our base, and, you know, we're, we're in a good place where I think it was new information for some of the people in the room. I felt good about where we are.
Yeah.
That's a good point. Thank you very much. It was well-attended and a good group. Legislative Committee, we met on January the 8th. Karen was attendance with me.
Yeah, we talked about how a lot of our districts here in Monroe County are feeling the fact that our representatives in Albany are really in flux, that we aren't feeling like we're strongly represented right now with a lot of retirements happening and reappointments, and subsequently decided to cancel our two-day trip to Albany. That usually happens in March.
March 19th, yeah.
In order to focus on meeting with folks locally, because we feel like we have some more opportunities. But then also talked about trying to attend some, some meet the candidate nights in a very nonpartisan fashion to offer information about what school districts are facing. We feel like folks who are willing to step up and represent us should be well-educated on the pressures that the school systems face and how foundation aid really works and what we need them to do for us in Albany, essentially. So that was, that was an interesting discussion.
Yeah, that's a really good point. We did, as we continue Mark's evening of positivity messaging to the group here.
Thanks, Mark. Feels good.
We had a lengthy conversation about, we debriefed the Albany trip, but we also then talked about legislative breakfast coming up in February the...
8th.
8th, and that upcoming two-day trip to Albany. And the decision was made, given this, it is, a state of flux is a great point. We, we really have a situation in Monroe County right now with our Senate and Assembly leadership or representation that is in, other than one or two seats, is in quite a, quite a state of change. It also is in a state of lack of leadership, if you will, or ability to be at a table when decisions are being made in Albany. So we talked about that, and we discussed for School Boards Association, looking at a little bit of different way to advocate for this upcoming year. Instead of going to Albany for the two-day, we're going to do a lot more local individual appointments with specific individuals and their staffs and try to give them, with great specificity, some of the issues, the core issues related to each individual school district. So not that we're not already doing that, but we figured, we figured we can hone in on that a little bit better. And then also, a greater emphasis on the legislative breakfast, February 8th, because Joe Morelli will attend and some, we've invited everybody, including our new county executive. So we've gone beyond what we normally do in the invites to that, so. We'll see. If you guys, anybody who wants to attend that hasn't let the office know, please make sure you let them know also as we go along. All right, then, let's see. We have our BOSI's report. Mark, you have anything from Sorok?
I do have one from Sorok.
Okay.
New Human Resource Director at BOSI is Dennis Glazer. Dan is leading the East Rochester Superintendent Search. Apparently, it's a closed search, from what I hear. Special education, there's a waitlist because of staffing, and also the budget next year is going up 2% for special education.
So, yeah, thank you very much, and thanks to Sorok for filling us in. Other board member reports, so this is sort of a synopsis of our activity. We last reported on it December 17th for individual board members. Christina, do you want to start? Do you have anything that you...
I don't. We have our next Extended Studies meeting coming up next week.
Okay, that's great. Larry, you have anything to do for us?
I feel like we say the same thing every time. We're doing a lot of construction.
I feel like we say the same thing every time. We're doing a lot of construction in all of our schools, okay? And I'll be more positive. We're making great, we're making great progress. Every time you open up a wall, there's something you find you don't want to find.
Not good either.
No, not good. But, and I've said this always and it's important to note, we have an amazing buildings team. The work that those guys do has done a lot to help us save money and find some things in advance of things. I also note that on February 6th, which is maybe a Thursday, but Lou and I are going to Successful Administration on School Construction Projects Training in Wasenica, so.
Did they give you a big stick when you leave?
You know what, I think in those environments, it's going to be board members and people in loose roles in some buildings, folks. It's just another opportunity to sort of learn what other people are doing and sort of share opportunities for how did you deal with situations, what are you dealing with, and things like that. You know, these schools are going to look so much better and be in such much better shape when they are all done. But the journey there will continue to be very painful.
Thanks for that positivity.
Coming from a different messenger though, so it's, it's okay, I guess. Karen, do you have anything, do you like to update?
You know what, Deanna did a great job updating the work of Curriculum Council's Culturally Responsive Teaching Committee. So I was able to attend that. Unfortunately Peggy was ill and I was unable to attend the District Environmental Committee meeting on Friday, the 10th. But we're meeting every month in order to work on our deliverable, which we hope to have to you in May. And so I'll catch up with them again soon.
Okay, great, thank you. Marv?
I was unable to attend the Curriculum Council meeting this, this month, but I'm back on board.
Okay, glad to have you back on board.
Two reports from Brighton Wardrobe. There's a sale coming up this coming Sunday from 12 until 4:00. Most items are under $5. A dollar for most children's clothing, $2 for most adults' clothing, handbags and shoes. And it's open to everybody. It's a fun day at Brookside School. The market is there. And it's their winter celebration, so there's all kinds of things going on. And we are also getting ready for Say Yes to the Dress, February 13th in the high school. And if anybody has any formal attire, prom clothes, men's clothes, women's clothes, shoes, handbags, jewelry, we would love to have your donation. And you can drop it off either at the high school or at Brookside School.
I will note that neither Marv nor I have found our old prom gear, but if we do, we'll get it over to you, okay?
We like, we like this.
Okay, I think if you guys find anything, that goes to the alumni association.
Smithsonian.
That's a rough one, Larry Davis. That's a rough one.
Frame it or something, so.
We're working on it.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Julene?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. I, I covered a lot of the stuff that I've been involved with. I do want to hit on one thing Theo mentioned when he was here. Julene and I were pleased to attend on behalf of the Board of Education and on behalf of Dr. McGowan, who needed to be in Albany for a couple of days. We attended the Martin Luther King Junior Day Assembly at the high school on Friday, and it was a wonderful program. Chaz Bruce, who, first time I had seen him, but what an enthusiastic young man in bringing music and dance to that message. He really engaged with the students and the adults in the building. Dr. Hall led the gang up front with their dancing shoes on. And it was a really, really powerful assembly without being a lecture or a list of speakers talking to kids, telling kids things. They engaged in song and dance together as a group. And his message about inclusivity and be who you are, be yourself, be open to differences between all, and don't be afraid to step out was really, I thought, powerful.
And listen to one.
And listen to one another. And they, and the group really was engaged and it was, it was a fun hour in the gym. So thanks to BSU, the group that put it together, and their leadership, and thanks to them for the invite. It was, it was a great event, so we want to make sure we, we got that into. Okay, we have a couple of items of business in the, oh, Dr. McGowan, I jumped over, I jumped over everything here. Let's get back up. Our Bright Teachers Association report. Nicole, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
We're trying to get moving and I shortchanged you folks, I'm sorry.
That's okay, you're trying to...
You're going to be very positive, so.
I am going to be super positive.
Take your time.
I will, I will hit the highlights. So the Council Rock, the day before break, we always have our stay in our PJs and readay, and we had lots of volunteers come to read. Actually, Dr. Rio came and read to my class. It was great. So we had 12 different readers from the board, admin, so different admins came over, specialist teachers, clerical staff. It's a, it's a really great day. The library at Council Rock has moved, so it's now across the hall. And they actually did that over the break during the time that you could actually get into the building. And that was really John Nivelli and his crew. They moved 15,000 volumes across the hallway because where the library is now is going to become the main office. And they needed to start working on that, so that, that was pretty amazing. Moving over to Fres, the Mrs. Cole's class, they made a flash mob of their, they were playing bard instruments and they made a flash mob going around the school playing vivaldi. So that was, that was also the Friday before break, so very happy. Shout out to 12 Corners because they actually gave most of the shout-outs this month, which was pretty amazing. So lots of things to share from 12 Corners. The student leaders planned teen building events called We Come Together, and they used their win time and used it to make connections with each other. It's kind of what we're talking about with making sure that we're building community. Maria Kitzetos, no, I'm selling her out in part. Thank you, Kitzetos, has Pen Pals with the Jewish Home of Rochester, and she invited them to come over. And they had a party together before the break, so that was a really nice thing. Victoria Masetti wanted me to let you know that this is the first time she's ever done a shout-out, and she was very excited because she's created a safety patrol. And in the lobby in the morning, they have five kids who are seven and six, seven and seven, seven and eight. And they greet everyone as they're coming in in the morning and try and keep the calm. They have lanyards, they want to get vests and matching shirts. Right now they just have the lanyards. And I think they presented to the 12 Corners faculty already about what they're doing, so that's a great, great thing. Laura Sarche and Courtney Eck, special ed teachers, had one of their previous 1214 students come and teach a class. And he went through, he went through an ELA, they did a worksheet, they played a game. But they were very responsive to him coming in, and she was very excited to share that he did that. Their, Katie Falter was in charge of a winter coat drive. They had 65 coats, cats' gloves, scarves donated. They were distributed to school 33. Eagle cleaners cleaned all of the items before they were donated. They made the news. And there was a link on your board report so that you can see the, the news clip. 12 Corners is going to host the Junior High Solo Fest this coming weekend. 650 7th and 8th grade students will be coming to 12 Corners this weekend, probably want to avoid the spot, to play, so I can't, I can't remember how many years they've had that in a row. BOSI's gave a grant to the library for lower Lexile books so that students who needed those levels of text could have access to them. And they had over 100 books that they were able to add with the grant. And they put it in a quick pick area. They're going to make sure they share it or have the Enel classrooms and the reading teachers share out the books first and then tell the kids where they are. Still, 12 Corners, the German kid, the German class for Mary Ann Walter, 7th grade, they've been reading Brothers Grimm and they ended up making gingerbread and building gingerbread houses and had different classrooms come in and tour. The FACS, which I think it will stand for Home Ec.
Consumer Science.
Okay. Okay, so they had the King Arthur Assemblies. They donated 400 loaves to food kitchens. 6th graders are working on sewing and creating designs. 7th graders are working on operating sewing machine and hand sewing skills for life. They're going to make two projects, one that they keep and one that they donate to the Center for Youth, Willow Center for Domestic Violence and House of Mercy. And in 8th grade, they are prepping mock interviews for applying for jobs and learning about what they need to do if they are working as a teenager, what their rights are. And then it, the high school, the English department is, has already participated in Poetry Out Loud, which is a nationwide competition. And on the last page, you see a picture of a student. So shout, props to 12 Corners. Nice job.
Lots of great stuff going on. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So our PTSA group, we have both of our representatives here this evening, Leslie and Natalie. And one of you has a report, or maybe you both do.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna split duties here.
Okay.
Starting with, we had a meeting, our central PTSA community meeting was held on January 8th. And we had a guest speaker, Emily Rittenberg, who conducted a parenting workshop. Emily is a parenting educator and school counselor. Her expertise was shared with approximately 70 parents that showed up. Very well attended. It was really great. Video of the workshop is now up on the District PTSA page as well as the District YouTube page. In February, the PTSA will have a nutritionist speak about our kids' nutritional habits. They will offer ideas pointing to the fact that many of our older kids start at 7:00 a.m. and go until 10:00 p.m. some days without sitting down for a meal. Ideas, ideas also on younger kids' lunches and what packs a punch. PTSA is also working out the final details on screening the movie Beyond Measure at the JCC. Let's see, I think we're looking at a couple of dates there right now. Hopefully in April, March or April. Council Rock, PTSA held their book and toy drive where they received a great deal of donations. They assisted with the kindergarten information night. It was packed, standing room only. Also at Council Rock, holding a meeting with the principal this week in conjunction with SED on communicating with school to educate for your child. They're in the midst of planning the very popular Super Bowl event where parents provide lunch for the Council Rock staff the Monday after the Super Bowl. And at French Road, the PTSA is in the midst of another round of roller skating. It's the last round for the whole year, and all the kids like that. They are co-hosting a bounce hopper event with the Council Rock on January 31st where the kids can go for free. And finally, at French Road, PTSA Family Movie Night is next Friday. They'll be doing their usual pizza, popcorn, and candy sale, and they are showing the movie Abominable.
At TCMS, the PTSA is in the middle of another round of activity nights. Next meeting with the principal is a book club to discuss the book Helping Your Anxious Teen by Sheila Joseph, Ph.D. That's coming up on February 6th. A 6th grader's mom passed away toward the end of break. PTSA is putting together a care package for the family. There is a sibling at French Road as well, so it is a TCMS-Fres joint project of care. And at the high school, PTSA held a staff appreciation lunch on 12/13. PTSA set up a buffet of soups, chili, salad bar with many fixings, including shredded chicken, veggies. There was homemade bread as well as two tables of desserts. The Brighton PTSA is busy planning for the next Brighton Believes Day. PTSA provided snacks for the class of 2019 reunion before break. And for the Snowball coming up this weekend, PTSA will be providing snacks for that as well.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And thank you for the update on the activities. And that's fantastic. I think the attendance at that parent, parenting workshop night that you had, I think that's very impressive, so.
What was interesting about that night is there were a lot of couples there, which I had never seen before. Both, and they wanted to talk about conflicts in parenting next time.
So conflict resolution parenting, it's going to be an April meeting or a March, it's going to be a topic coming up, I guess.
That was a good one, yeah.
There's a conversation that we might do the next workshops with her as well, so.
I think that type of turnout for that topic is, is really positive to see. Folks are reaching out, so thank you very much. Dr. McGowan, superintendent's report.
Couple of really quick items. First off, congratulations. We sent an announcement out today to Carolyn Rabidou and Rob Thomas on their impending retirements. We're happy for them and sad for us. Carolyn joined the district in 2007, was an assistant principal, of course, at French Road before becoming the Director of Student Services, and Rob Thomas in 2001 joined us as an assistant principal, and is currently the middle school principal. And we're very excited for both of them, so. Miss you a great deal, but happy for you.
And we have a whole half a year to go.
That's right, that's right.
We're reporting there. No senioritis back there.
He'd say it if he had the microphone, but he doesn't, so say, as Rob slips out the door. He said he enjoyed the practice with this long weekend. The Mondays and weekends are, are good practice.
By the way, we assigned Rob, when he retires, at Safety Committee. He's going to be the new traffic monitor. He just has to walk, he'd walk right across the street. It's a volunteer position he's offered to take on and with a bunch of flags, and he's got a plan, so we'll see how that works out.
And one of those bright vests, yeah.
Big bright vest, yeah.
We will have, as I mentioned, just keep an eye out for the thought exchange regarding the budget. And please give us your feedback. We'll also have on your next board agenda the approval of the calendar for next year. I can tell people that we will be proposing a start on Wednesday, the 9th, September 9th, so the Wednesday after Labor Day. And that's in line with the BOSI's calendar. I don't see any way that that changes at this point, so people can count on that. And the other change, or not change, but important item that people are always wondering about is the spring break, which right now is scheduled for March 29th. That's also in line with the BOSI's calendar, and there wouldn't be any other break that we propose to you. For those viewing at home who are interested, that's in line with both Passover and Easter that week, meaning that Sunday and Good Friday inclusive in that week. And the first two days of Passover, I believe, are on the 29th, not 30th, so. The vacation that week is not set based on any holiday.
It's March 29th, 21st, just to be clear.
Yeah, yeah, March 29th, yes, that break, yes. So the 20, 20, 21 calendar. We don't set the calendar based on those holidays, but they happen to fall there. They are done based on when the state assessment schedule is. And a consideration of the distance between the February breaks, state assessments, Memorial Day at the end of the year, et cetera. And it happens to work well with those two particular holidays, but they don't typically revolve around any particular holidays.
And we can talk about it further when we do approve it, but it's important you noted that certain elements are the countywide BOSI's calendar, if you will, that are out of our purview. We weigh in during here, but those break weeks need to be coordinated with everybody for all the obvious reasons, so.
Yes, and Judy Wegman, the BTA president, I both sit on that county committee, so we participate in that discussion. But yes, that is a regional, that's done, so. And that's all I have tonight.
Yeah, so it's the 27th of March.
So it begins on the 27th, okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Couple of items of business this evening to wrap up, folks. We do have, first, let me ask for a motion to approve the second read on Policy 3225, Community Relations on Speakers at District Events.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julene and seconded by Karen. You recall that this is a brand-new policy designed to provide guidance for outside speakers in district or school-sponsored events and could be classrooms, professional development assemblies, graduation, et cetera. It was written and new, approved as a first read. Tonight's a second read. We don't have anything further. The policy has been through our internal folks. We've seen it. You know, we appear to be in good shape. Does anybody have anything new further on that this evening?
No.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Let me ask for one motion to approve the bids as listed as item nine and then items 1, 2, 3, 4 under nine. Motion to approve all four of those, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. I ask for approval of all four bids. Normally, we separate bids out separately, but these are all four cooperative bids for a variety of supplies, custodial supplies, trainer supplies, lunch paper and plastic supplies, and health and safety supplies. And we've discussed this before, that they are part of the cooperative bidding process that we utilize through Monroe, or BOSI's 2, Monroe Orleans BOSI's 2, to get us the best possible pricing for these items, so. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Also this evening, you have a memo from Lou outlining approval on a professional services contract with an entity to, to correct and improve upon as part of our auditorium proj- contract with an entity to, to correct and improve upon as part of our auditorium project, the rigging and a number of items there that are listed in the Brighton High School Auditorium. So may we have a motion to approve a professional service contract with Syracuse scenery and stage lighting?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Karen. Does anybody have any further question on that? It's pretty self-explanatory. We just brought it by Lou before. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then finally tonight, a motion, please, for our consent agenda to approve that.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Marv, seconded by Christina, has the usual items in it, and we don't have any gifts to acknowledge this evening. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Members of the board, any other items of business for this evening? Dr. McGowan, anything for this evening? All right, then, we next meet on February 11th, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Christina, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.